Well, calling me in Florida, this is a work meeting. So a little bit different than our regular board meetings, when the second meeting each month will be more business, but this is more information that's more laid back, I would say. More time for discussion. So I see that all members are present. We've got one student present and so we're ready to begin, I guess, with our communications, which we turn over to our superintendent.
All right, sounds good. I will start by inviting our elementary principal up for her presentation. I will cast that for anybody to see as well. First, before we jump in, I just want to welcome the new members here at the table and thank the first serving our students and our families and our community here in Painesville. We're happy to have you on board and I look forward to getting to know you even more. And I want to extend an invite for you to come on over to the elementary school when we are in session, so you can hear the buzz and the excitement with students and staff in the building. So during our updates, we just provide kind of a overview of what's happening at each of our buildings. And so I'm just giving you that, that first bullet up there, December recap. December seems long ago with, you know, the, the weather and the closures and all of that. But thinking back to December, we had some great things happening at the elementary. We had our third grade music concert, Home for the Holidays. We had our second grade gingerbread house making, and that's when they invite parents and families to come in and such a great turnout. You walked into the cafeteria and just smelled the sugar from all the gingerbread houses, but such a fun event that our staff and our students put on in getting our families in the buildings. Fourth graders did some great persuasive writing. They were trying to persuade Santa to choose a different animal to help with the distribution of gifts. So that was great. Fifth grade is still participating in Dare. Each week they are learning about, you know, most recently conflict and resistance, and they have Officer Lapaca in providing that instruction. Recorders and music walking down the hall. You can hear them playing their recorders. The staff, we put on a holiday extravaganza performance. We had a in the dark light show. We did
It was fabulous.
I did do that.
I loved that video.
Little did I know the whole thing was going to be recorded start to finish, but that's okay. We introduced students to the word vignette, and so that was kind of fun for them and fun for us as staff, just to have fun with our students and embrace the spirit and the excitement throughout the school. And we had over 100 of our elementary students participate in the SAD sponsored Christmas party, and that had a rescheduled date. So it was great to see that so many more students were able to attend the makeup date. So thank you to the high school SAD group for putting that on for our students. And of course, so much more happening in December as well. I do want to just acknowledge the team effort with the inclement weather days that we had, you know, all the way from Janelle getting out on the roads, finding out what what are the roads looking like to our staff, you know, accepting those calls, the snow removal. I know Gary and others have been working extremely hard removing snow around the buildings, keeping them safe for all of us. In the kitchen, meal prep, you know, talking with Lynn at the elementary school and keeping her in the loop as to what we're doing and never mind, we're not serving breakfast today, and so she pivot and turns and, you know, really it's that that team effort, transportation with the bus company. Pause, altering their schedule to provide care. And certainly to our parents here in Painesville, we know that anytime that we adjust our schedules, it really impacts everybody. And so just thank you for all hands on deck and, you know, keeping our kids safe. And that's our number one priority. So I wanted to call out those special acknowledgements. In addition, generous donations we have received at Painesville Elementary. I think I talked to you the last time about the Secret Santa donation. And unfortunately, our December leadership meeting got canceled, and so we're having that on our agenda here in January and deciding how can we best utilize the $500 donation to service our students. We recently received Grace United Methodist Church. They donated brand new hats and mittens, a huge box full of brand new hats and mittens, and their timing was perfect coming back with all the snow. I want to recognize Avon Plastics, Christmas Care Drive, and then also individual families. We were able to, or they were able to provide 28 of our students at Painesville Elementary with special gifts and gift cards right before the holidays. And the day that we got out early, myself and a couple other staff members, we had the pleasure to haul out big boxes of wrapped gifts to parents' cars and just say, here's a little something special for your family. And, you know, the smiles and it was just perfect. So just want to make sure that we recognize the efforts that went into those. Student recognition. We have two students, Emery and James. They have received their certificate for reading over 1 million words. And James, I want to recognize he read his 1 millionth word back in November. And Emery just read hers here in January. So we, we celebrate, give them a special certificate. And that is all measured through a program that we have called Accelerated Reader. So very neat and exciting.
What grade are they in?
Emery is third grade and James is fifth grade. Yes. So as we look ahead to January, we have what is called winter benchmarking. And if you recall, we're talking about that early on in September. We measure math and reading skills. And so now we look at what does our student growth look like in the areas of math and reading from fall to winter. And so we use that data to monitor and adjust our instructional programming, whether it's full group instruction or small group instruction, so we can meet the needs of our students. And our MTSS teachers and classroom teachers modify groups based on what that data shows us, so we can be intentional about the skills and concepts that we are teaching our students during a special time in our day called Power Half Hour. That's really where we get to hone in on those skills. That's a peek at January. We have that coming up next week, that benchmarking time. And then, of course, down below, I added some pictures. Hopefully you were able to take a peek at those. Just enjoying the snow outside, really reiterating to families, making sure that they send students to school in their winter gear, being that we have morning recess for 15 minutes in the morning and our afternoon recess as well. And certainly families know they can come, you know, to the school or to the nurse's office if they need help with snow pants or boots or gloves, what have you. Or if a student forgets, we have that on hand. But just some pictures for you to take a peek at, and James and Emery there down below as well.
I just want to reiterate, if you're new on the board, when I first came on the board, I actually spent the first couple of years, I would go down to elementary school and spend at least a half a day, even have lunch. Went to the various levels. I did that at the high school too. You know, you're welcome to come in and and it's good just to hit some of the classes. Usually the principal had everything lined up, so knew right where to go and they were prepared for me, but it's eye opener.
Anything else for me at all?
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right. So our secondary principal provided a our report this evening. I will add, cast that for people at home, even though it's things and you could see it, but let's just do it pretty fast here. High school, they're going to start working on summer registration. And it's going to be a little bit earlier registration this year, so that they can engage interest in some of the, some new opportunities that they are looking at presenting and then putting those, those opportunities into pathways. And the hope here is that it provides a little bit more opportunity for kids when they get from that seventh, eighth grade, and then they come into ninth grade, they've had a little bit more opportunity to be exposed to just a multitude of areas, so that they have kind of a little bit better idea about, these are some classes that I might like to, like, like to take. And so the, the secondary building is really looking at pulling registration interest earlier, so that they know really what classes they need to be focused on for next year. David will be talking more about that and the pathways at our next board meeting. He also wanted to share that he's looking at pulling the bounce back project that's sponsored through Centra Care into the sixth grade, all of our sixth grade. So you may, you may recall hearing bounce back, as we've talked a little bit about our Culture and Climate Committee. We talked about doing some bounce back work there and bounce back was do, was at our in-service. The welcome back, the kickoff, and we talked about some of the things like gratitude and the paying it forward and so pulling the bounce back project into support our sixth grade kids will be kind of a fun opportunity. So I'm excited for you to hear more about that from, from David as well. This morning, he gave a tour of our facility to a whole host of people from the Dassault du Côte d'Albany community. It's really fun to have people come and look at our space and to hear them just be kind of like in awe of what we have going for our secondary kids. So it's really, it was really a fun opportunity. And so it was just, he wanted to share that with you as well. Just some, some key dates that are on here for the end of the semester, midwinter activities. February 8th is our egg and career day for eighth grade students. That's always a really big activity day. February 10th is Sweet Fest Dance and February 15th is the Sweet Fest Coronation. David too extended an opportunity and a welcome to our new board members. So please get in touch with David and he'll invite you in for a tour as well. So you might wonder, well, where is David? Why is he not here? And I'll tell you, it's because as we go through our activities report, he was called upon to ref today. There were rescheduled events and we were short. Whoops, I'm in registration again. We were short for referees. And, and so instead of rescheduling and not having an opportunity to host the events, David said, can I give my written report? And I said, absolutely. So our Activities Director update, and again, you know, our Activities Director is a coach during the winter season, and so we early on had agreed that a written report was appropriate when he has practice and events. As you'll notice, the weather really has wreaked havoc on the schedule for the winter activities. There's been so many factors that go into play when they are looking to reschedule. Some of those are, like I just talked about, finding the availability of referees, your clock operators, your the bus drivers, the ticket takers, all of those pieces that come into play in trying to determine whether events are scheduled or if they're they're rescheduled or if they're held or whatever. All of those things are just, they, they come into play. And they've been busy. They've been, they've really been forced to do a lot to reschedule. Gratefully, we have facilities that allow us to, you'll see that that's coming up. We're going to have some double headers of girls' basketball and boys' basketball in the pack and the gym. So that'll be kind of fun to have both the boys and girls, JV and varsity, all the whole gamut in the building on one night. So those are, those are busy happen days. But it's really a great opportunity that we have. Many of our, our surrounding communities don't have that opportunity, and so they're having to cancel games instead of being creative with their scheduling. One of the things that Rick also wanted to just point out is, is a thanks to our supporters and a thanks to our students in the stands. It really is nice to have officials comment that I like coming to officiate in Painesville. I know I'm not going to be berated by fans and, and I know that it's going to be a good place for me to be. So that's just a huge thank you to our community. It's a thank you to our students and it's a thank you to our, our parents that really do keep, they cheer for the team. They don't cheer against others. So that's just a thanks to them. So those are the Activities, Activities Director updates for you today. So then I'm going to just update Community Education Director. I'm super excited to let everybody know that we have offered a contract to Chris O'Brien, and she has accepted. Chris O'Brien is our, she is a currently a Community Education Director in Sartell, and she'll be on board with us as of January 23rd. So that's really exciting. She has experience also over in Kimball. So she has an understanding of a small, of a small school district. She has an experience with a large school district, and I think she's really going to be able to pick up where we've left off with, with Matt and be able to just carry us moving forward. So I'm really excited to provide that update for you all. Both the Technology Director and the Buildings and Grounds Director positions have, I have received some applications for those positions. And after the MSBA conference this week, I'm hoping to hold interviews. So those will be, hopefully we can get those on board again. Just as a Tech Director update, Jonah Johnson is still helping us on a and he's been doing a great job staying on top of door scheduling, staying on top of new higher assignments of, of profiles. And he's been able to, to really support us well, and I've been very grateful for his support. Buildings and grounds, I, I will just echo what Cassie commented on. Our buildings and grounds, our, our custodians and our maintenance have really just been top notch, keeping the building, keeping it clear. The snow removal is daunting, to say the least. And so they've done a great job. And so I do want to just say, you know, thank you to Dave. Dave was here during Dave Schumacher was, had just a ton of work and Gary had a ton of work at the elementary just last week with all the heavy snowfall. So thank you for keeping us, keeping our, our places as white free as they can be. So those are the communication updates that I have for you all today.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a comment. So when we started the tech centers that we built, Randy Kern and I went down to Dassault du Côte d'Albany of all things.
Oh, interesting.
That was just caught my eye. And we went through the night they got their whole community together to talk about it and let Randy and I participate. They probably had 150 people there. And some of what we did in the process, we patterned off of them.
Okay.
But I did hear in the process that what they were planning didn't go anywhere. But very interesting that that's one that's kind of got us fired up because they were ahead of us and trying to see how to put this all together.
Yeah.
Randy Kern was on the school board six, seven years ago, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, when I came on board four years ago, you had just left.
Okay.
Okay, then let's move on to legislative priorities. So legislature's in session now and it's going to be a really interesting year, so.
Yep.
Keep our ears open.
So the first one I wanted, so what I, what I wanted to do today is just to share with you the, the legislative priorities of the entities, the organizations, the, so MASA is the School Administrator Association that I'm a member of. I serve on the Leadership Committee. And, and so, and then we're going to take a look at MSBA, which is the School Board Association, MREA, which is the Minnesota Rural Education Association, and C, which we talked about, our Schools for Equity and Education. So the reason I attached these, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time going through every single one of them, but I'm just going to kind of take and highlight really kind of two pieces here. You're going to notice an increase in the basic formula allowance by 5% per year for two years linked with inflation and fully fund the Special Education Cross Subsidy. This does have, I do have the, the whole platform here for people to take a look at that explains a little bit more about the why, why they're asking for what they're asking for, but you're going to see a common theme between MASA and I'm going to pull up MSBAs, so the, the School Board Association. So I'll cast that one for you too. And you'll notice the School Board Association, again, the legislative platform is going to show basic formula, mental health support, knowing on the fully funding education. So when you look at what that means to them, you're going to see increasing the formula by 5% each year linked index to inflation. You're going to see fully fund the Special Education Cross Subsidy. Equity and equalization of formulas. So those are some common terms that you're seeing and you're hearing across all of the platforms. Okay? Again, I'm going to come in and just show you MREA and I can cast that as well, so people can see what we're looking at there. So MREA, again, they're saying their, what their key action items are is they're looking at recruiting and retaining staff in rural, in rural Minnesota. We know it is really hard to hire staff. They're talking about school facilities. You're going to see when, in, in some of the other platforms, when you see equity and they're talking about equalization, they're going to talk about long-term facility maintenance dollars. So there's advocacy to have more money coming into school districts to maintain their facilities. And, and they also, they're asking for an increase on the basic formula by 5% annually, also for 24, 25. They didn't go so far as to index for inflation, but they asked for a 5% increase. And then you'll see if they're requesting a 40% Special Education Cross Subsidy Reduction Aid. So again, you're hearing an increase in the formula and addressing the cross subsidy for special education. And then the last platform that we're just going to really briefly take a look at is C. And again, you'll notice why I'm bringing this forward. So in C, one of the, the key components for for C is really about equalization, which, and we're going to watch a little video right after this, that's just a short three or four minute video about why this is so important. And, and you're going to notice that they're going to talk about also increasing increasing local control, but also increasing the basic formula. And when I talk about local control, one of the things that they're going to be advocating for is allowing school boards the opportunity to make decisions around things like local optional revenue, about whether or not an, a school district has the ability to access more funding for facility maintenance money. Those are things that, that advocating for a local control versus statewide statewide designations. Okay? You also see that in increasing the basic formula indexing to inflation, you're also going to see aggressively address the Special Education Cross Subsidy. So those are four different platforms from four different educational entities. And all of them talk about increasing the, the basic formula, addressing Special Education Cross Subsidy and equalization in some way, shape or form. So what I want to just quickly show you is this short little funding video from C about inequity in educational funding. Okay? And it's a, you may have seen it before. It's, it's been out for a couple of years, but I think it's a really important reminder about why there's so much discussion at the legislative level about equalization and funding in rural school districts. Okay? So I will cast this too for people to see.
This, you'll own your business like
One pizza, please, with the works.
Sure thing. Hey, you look like you're from Businessville. Is that right?
Yes, I'm from Businessville.
All right. That'll be $10. Thank you very much.
Wow, that's great. I'll have a pizza with the works too.
You live in hometown, don't you?
Yes, ma'am. Proud to be from hometown Minnesota.
A pizza with the works will cost you $30.
But I only have $10.
Well, for hometown folks, this is what you get for $10.
But that's not fair. He paid the same and he got a much better pizza.
Well, that's our special formula here at Capital Pizza. You wouldn't accept this if a restaurant treated you this way. Yet this unfairness is real for a lot of schoolchildren and taxpayers across Minnesota. Here's how it works. When the residents in Businessville pass a levy referendum for their schools, the corporations, shopping malls and office complexes help pay that bill. Neighboring hometown has very little business development. When residents in hometown pass a school levy for an identical amount of money, they pay two or three times as much. You heard right. That's double or even triple the dollars for the same amount of school levy money. Homeowners in Businessville get a tax discount that is sanctioned and approved by state lawmakers. Under the same unfair system, if levy taxes are equal in the two towns, Businessville schools get two or three times more levy revenue than hometown schools. This allows Businessville schools to offer their students more opportunities and a higher quality education than students in neighboring hometown who have larger class sizes, fewer music and arts programs, outdated technology, no extra help for kids who need it, and fewer advanced courses. It's time to end this unfair system of taxation and support equity in education.
Tell your legislators to equalize education funding to make Minnesota's system of funding public schools fair. For more information, go to schoolsforequity.org. All public school students, like me, must have equal access to a high-quality education regardless of where they live in Minnesota.
So again, I, you may have seen this before, and it may, maybe a video that you've for board members, if you've been here for a while, you may have seen that. But that really is kind of the very, very simplified context of, of equalization and why there's so much emphasis and focus on legislative priorities to equalize funding. Okay? So that when we, we can maximize the dollars that we, that our taxpayers have put in to really come and, and get equal to what a, a larger community with a more robust industry or shopping or business structure is able to provide. So I just wanted to kind of share with you the, the form, the, the platforms, why some of those things are what they are. And just provide an opportunity, I, I put those in there so you could have an opportunity to just peek at them. Are there any questions that you have for me about those?
No, when you, when you said, or up there it said 5%. How does that affect a school of Painesville and dollars? What, what are you, what are you talking for numbers? I mean, I'm not holding you to anything, but
Oh, I'd have to
Say a 5%, is that much really is that?
I
I mean, or don't you know?
I'm not even going to give you a rough. I, if I, I would be happy to calculate that for you, but I, if you give me during the next video, I'll calculate it for you.
One thing I would say is that, first of all, I think it's important that all these groups are on the same page when they go.
Yes.
The second thing is 5% would be huge.
Yes.
Because normally when we've gone down a legislature, we're fighting for, if we, can we get it to 2%? They're trying to hold it at 1% and we're trying to get 2%. 5% would be
Right.
unbelievable. So I kind of answered my question. I just, I didn't know.
And I don't
Three.
On the percentage increase of the formula. The other thing I want, I just want to mention about, because it took me a lot of time to figure out this C thing, but C isn't necessarily rural schools either. There, there's schools in the city like Centania where my granddaughter graduated from, they're a C school because they have no business in that school district. And I know some rural schools, I won't mention any, but I was at one recently up in northwestern Minnesota. That is beautiful, big school, and that little town just happened to have two major industries for some reason. So it makes a big difference. If we had 3M here in Painesville, we'd have a different school, I believe. And that's, that's the unequitable part of it, is that some of these communities have those resources.
Yeah.
But in addition to that, is those little trickling things, you know, they said for the business one.
They said for the business one, where it went from their levy some of the different color blue that trickled up and the different color, I believe that stayed subsidized to help them out. So we might get a couple hundred thousand dollar boost and something we do, they might get a million dollars. So how is that equitable? Because the state of Minnesota says equal opportunity for the students in the state of Minnesota. And it is not here.
So in, in part of where we've seen probably the most benefit to that is where we have the egg to school tax credit. Because that was always a barrier for school districts to pass building bonds, especially out in rural Minnesota, where there's a lot of egg land. So that in agriculture, so a, a large egg owner, they, on, on a building bond, they can get, I believe that it's up to 70% this year is the tax credit back for those tax bonds. And so that's really, it, it, it becomes less of a barrier for a school district to pass a building bond. But those are very similar tax credits that large corporations get when a school brings in a levy, they get, they get the tax credits. Yep. So your point is well made. Everybody is on the same page, you know, which I think is the same vein of communication.
Pizza example is perfect as far as I'm concerned. I've seen this over and over again.
And C also has days at the Capitol and we'll, we'll be invited to, there's a specific day when Painesville and other schools are invited. And you can actually go on the Capitol and they'll do some education there, but also a chance to meet with our legislators and do lobbying.
Um, as a, as an aside, I have invited both Senator Howe and Republican representative. I always say her last name wrong.
Dameith. It's in the paper. Pronunciation was Dameith.
Yep. And I, for some reason in my mind, I just have that wrong. But I've invited both of them to come and, and meet with us and as, as a board, whether they are, I, I put out February and March dates so that if there's something that works, and, and it would be great to have an opportunity to visit with them and, and hear what, what they see is happening, but also they can hear from, from your voice as well. So I'll keep you posted on that.
And I'm sure you probably know that Representative Dameith, she went to school here.
Yeah. Oh, well, no, I did not know that she was a Painesville grad.
Yeah. No, she graduated from, she went
She went to school here though. Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, she was a year younger than I was.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Um, any other questions on the, the legislative priorities? Okay.
I hope we get a cut of that extra money they have. All this extra money they have and they can't figure out where to put it. Yeah, whole list of places where it could benefit the kids. We're just forgotten sometimes now.
All right. Would you like me to move on?
Sure.
Okay. So Portrait of a Graduate or Profile of a Graduate, you're going to hear it kind of the terms interchangeably, Portrait, Profile. But the concept is really the same. And the reason I'm taking a few minutes to show the, these, these videos to you today is because part of our, our strategic plan does identify that, that Painesville will work on a profile of a graduate. And so I, I wanted to take some time to show you truly what it is and, and, and what that could mean for us. So I'm going to queue up the Portrait of a Graduate.
Good thing it's just ads that's starting.
Now I can skip it.
Hello, I'm Dr. Melvin J. Brown, Superintendent of Reynoldsburg City Schools. The Portrait of a Graduate is our vision for 21st century learning. It was developed with several key stakeholders made up of leaders, principals, teachers, parents, students, in our partnership with Patel for Kids. In line with our five-year strategic plan, the Reynoldsburg Portrait of a Graduate focuses on five competencies that will help set up our students, not only for a successful educational experience beginning in kindergarten, but after high school graduation, college and beyond. We know that the world is changing and it is imperative that we send our kids out into the world as innovative problem solvers, socially and emotionally competent individuals, effective communicators, collaborative workers and socially aware and global citizens. These competencies are displayed every day in the work and learning in which our staff and students participate. And importantly, we know that colleges and universities and companies are looking to hire our students who are also individuals who are able to possess and demonstrate these competencies. In this video, you'll see our Portrait of a Graduate brought to life at all levels of learning, from elementary school to high school. I want to thank everyone who's involved in educating the children of Reynoldsburg. And I hope that you are as proud as I am to see the Portrait of a Graduate come to fruition. Thank you so much.
So the process we use is founded in helping the districts and the community collaborate to understand the why. Because the world has changed since you and I were in school. And so educational experiences need to change with it. So the first meeting is all about helping the district and the community understand the why things need to change. And from there, we go into a series of multiple meetings that get from how the world has changed to what are your hope streams and aspirations for young people within your district? To ultimately, what are the skills that you think your young people need within your community that are transferable across any choice they make upon graduation? Whether they choose to be enlisted, enrolled or employed? The big thing about the portrait is a collaborative effort between the community and the school district. Because if it was all community driven, the school district would see it as something being done to them. And if it was all school district driven, it'd be harder for the community to get behind it. And so through the collaboration of the community and the school district and some crowdsourcing tools that we use throughout the process, we get a lot of stakeholder input.
I think that the elementary level here, the Portrait of a Graduate, we focus mostly on making it more of the whole child. And it's more not focused on the academics, but how can we reach just the whole child? Personally, in the classroom, I make sure that my students are confident in what they are delivering every day. They're able to regulate their emotions and they're able to understand and recognize the feelings that they feel throughout the day. I think as elementary educators, essentially, we are preparing students for a career force of jobs that don't even exist today. And I, I think that's really important for us to make sure that it's our responsibility to prepare them to be competent in the world that they're going to be in. It's, it's our responsibility. I think that the Portrait of a Graduate really enables all of those, those characteristics. It has them all embedded inside of it. You came in and saw just a little snippet of the effective communicator back there. But also the collaboration. So with our like morning meeting, they're able to think pair share with each other, where they're talking to each other one-on-one. And they're so comfortable with doing this. And again, so making sure that they have these skills right now and able to carry on to, as they get older and carrying on that confidence that I like to empower them with.
The things that we're really focusing on right now, we want to make sure that the students are effective communicators and a communications class lends itself very, very well to that. So in here, we're using things like our podcasts. We're trying to make commercials and videos, teach kids how to communicate their ideas to the world at large. We also want them to be collaborative. So in this class, we're oftentimes, we're grouping up. We're finding people that are interested in a lot of the same end products. And we're trying to find a way to, you know, share our ideas with one another and also then share our ideas to a greater audience.
With this class, it's very easy because the kids are doing a lot of different work together. We're essentially a business class. We work with a lot of small businesses, local libraries, stuff like that. So they're able to design together, right? Collaboratively working together. We do social emotional competency every single day by checking in real quick with a one through five system of, how are you feeling right now? How are you feeling today? If you're a one or a two, great. Anytime you're a three through five, let me know. So that way they're starting to recognize their, their emotions, kind of those, those triggers, stuff like that. They're able to start looking at that and saying, okay, I'm recognizing this and I'm getting triggered, so I need to start doing this. We, problem solve constantly, right? So one of the big problems was, was we were, had to fold 469 t-shirts, right? So one of the things that we did was we only had one shirt folder. To do it neatly, do it organized. They said, can we buy another one? I said, we're not buying another one because we haven't made any money in this class yet. And they said, okay, well, what do we do? And I said, what would you do? So of course, like everybody does, they turn to YouTube, right? And they started finding one. And sure enough, they found one made out of cardboard and duct tape. They were able to put together the designs, draw it up, measure it out, everything that we would need. And more than half of our shirts have actually been folded by a cardboard homemade. So they were in, you know, problem solving in an innovative way that, that didn't require me to guide them. I just said, what would you do? And they kind of went and did that on their own. So it fits perfectly in with the pathways because it's going to kind of keep building as they go, right? When they leave here from fifth grade and they go to sixth grade, it's going to keep building on all of those different types of, of the pathways or the guidelines on the Portrait of a Grad, the competencies. So it's, it works very well.
To me, they're invaluable, right? I can't get enough value out of them because when I talk to people outside of the school, my old buddies from high school, my significant other, my family, they all are saying that the kids need these skills. They need to collaborate, problem solve, work with people they don't know, navigate an emotional world. And it's really helpful to have a way to measure those things because it gives the kids ownership on how to grow with specific ideas to get better in those areas.
Collaboration is important for, one, in general, real world because you're, honestly, you're not going to be able to find people that you're used to working with. So you're going to need to learn how to work with them, collaborate with them on projects.
The earlier they establish the competencies, the better. Because as I can see with kids who come in from outside a district or even coming off the pandemic, they have to relearn a lot of the skills, especially working together and socializing with people they don't know. So the earlier we can make that happen, the better. So they are not surprised when they get to high school at, oh, I'm supposed to talk to my peer about problems? Yeah, you are. And they already know how to do that, especially if we build it up from a young age. I think they'll be able to go into the workforce and not be afraid of interacting with their peers and not be intimidated by asking for help or lending out help because they have done that throughout their whole high school career. And I think it's something that employers are really going to value later on.
Our Portrait of a Graduate competencies have become a true anchor of what we do in classrooms for every student, every day. We are hoping that we can build students who not only know their content standards and their language arts and their math and their social studies and science, but also that they are becoming innovative problem solvers. They're becoming empathetic and socially emotionally competent. They can make sure that they're aware of the world around them, becoming a socially aware global citizen. So one of the goals that we have in classrooms is that we have a balance of those things, 21st century competencies, but also content standards to create a system of deeper learning for our students.
I believe that it's important to be a problem solver in school because there's always some sort of problem that comes and arises every day and that you have to be able to have a clear head and think through it to get the best, the maximum best results. You need to be able to take multiple ideas and put them into one idea incorporating a little bit of each. Because everyone wants to feel, feel, feel a part of the group. And the only way to do that is to make sure everyone has a say.
In science, we had a project that we had to do about elements. And, and a person they were working. So I had, we had to collaborate and I had to give them a task to do. And we had to like go step by step to give them a task to work together. It's important to show empathy through heart for your classmates because if you don't show empathy to them, then they're going to feel like they're selfish. Like that's going to make them feel bad for themselves. So you have to show empathy so you can be a nice person just like in the whole world. Everybody faces adversity. So you have to go through adversity and help others.
Most recently, a specific project that was done here was done across our entire sixth grade team. It was a long walk to water. The idea behind the project is that every community has problems that they need to solve. In the case of this novel, the problem was how to get water back to the community. What the teachers did with this project and what the scholars did was really explore that question of what community problems can we solve? So right there, that hits on the Portrait of a Grad competency of being socially aware, global citizen, trying to problem solve for our community. Through that project, they worked with the math department also. So it's interdisciplinary project to kind of trace the steps that Salwa, the main character, walked. They also work with the science department on how to create filtration systems for communities in need. And so there, that is that innovative problem solver. You know, what type of problems do we have? And how can we, as Reynoldsburg students, solve those problems? Which the project has included so many things. And I still think they're working on how to solve our problems here in Reynoldsburg. And so students tackle issues like food poverty, mental health and what that looks like. And how can we put policies and processes or get resources for people who have those needs? And so they were collaborating in groups, which is another one of our Portrait of a Grad competencies. They had to write a paper. And so through their research, you know, that's how they communicate and talk with partnerships outside. So then you have the oral communication. So this sixth grade team really did a good job of incorporating a project that hit on all of our Portrait of a Grad competencies.
We are making sure that students are getting instructional strategies that are learner centered. We're building positive school culture and classroom culture. But we're also making sure that our competencies are evident as students are being assessed over all of the skills and attributes that they need to be a 21st century global citizen.
One of the great parts about teaching middle school with Career Connections is that we get to the kids before they head into the pathways. So these ideas of Portrait of a Grad, of innovative problem solver and socially emotionally competent, effective communication, we can connect to the different clusters. So in seventh grade, they learn eight clusters. In eighth grade, they learn eight clusters. And right now, they're experiencing these interviews where they actually get the experience of being in an interview unlike ever before. So it allows for them to, to fail within the classroom so that we can improve them before they get out into the real world. That kind of allows them to collaborate with one another, where this week they actually interviewed one another. They were the interviewer and the applicant. It allowed them to be socially aware by meeting wonderful community members who volunteer their time with us. And then it also allows them to be that innovative problem solver that we want them to be in their future careers. One of the number one things that, that I hear at being a career teacher when I bring speakers in is they talk about how excited they are for courses like this. They're excited that kids are having the idea of, of opening up their mind and being authentic. This idea of solving problems and communicating with one another is a real struggle with people coming into the workforce right now. So those Portrait of a Grad standards are things that they're looking for, for people to actually take their own initiative instead of just doing something by the book or having to sit and be taught one by one how to do it.
One of the things that I'm seeing as I walk into classroom is more intentional discussions between teachers and students. Students are able to take more ownership in their learning. One of the things we're doing with our competencies is having students self-evaluate themselves. And then teachers are having conferences with those students and, and kind of comparing the evaluations and, and going back and forth. So it's allowed our teachers to collaborate with our students more So it's allowed our teachers to collaborate with our students more and and be more intentional with those discussions and and the students are really liking that part of it. One of the things that we have done, um, as a staff is be more intentional with our planning. So for every unit, for every weekly plan, we have a focus on a different competency. Um, so and one of the things that that's allowed us to do, um, it's really made teaching more relevant for our students. At this age, at the junior high level, we get a lot of the whys and and why do I need to know this? So now every single lesson, every single unit has a tie to one of the competencies. And the students are able to see how this is going to be beneficial, whether it be a math project that they don't think that they're going to use the math portion of it. There's always that competency, whether it be collaboration, communication or problem solving. Now that why is already answered for them and they can see the purpose of the the lesson and and understand why this is going to be beneficial for them down the road. The career component is actually probably at this level at junior high, the most beneficial part of this because obviously our high school have our career connections and we're trying to get as many of those incorporated to our our middle school. And this is the first year we have an eighth grade Career Connections teacher. And we're just trying to be intentional about focusing on careers and setting our students up for success. Um, and we say it all the time, all educators talk about, you know, caring not just about the facts and and being able to regurgitate, you know, uh, facts or or content specific things. But this really shows our students that we do care about their success going forward. So those focusing, again, repeating myself with with collaboration, communication, um, the students are understanding these soft skills that we're teaching in the class are going to help them be successful no matter what. You know, we talk about very few jobs anymore are you on a silo? And and our students are understanding that these soft skills are going to allow them to be successful when they leave Reynoldsburg. So I think that's been extremely beneficial.
All right. So, um, you heard a lot of terms, you heard a lot of things that we've probably talked about. Well, I got a X over here or we're going to end up watching a vintage art show. Um, so the 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 concepts behind a Portrait of a Graduate is is having a collaborative determination in between our community, our businesses, our students, our our school community. What is it that we all collectively determined are the core values or the the competencies that we want our Haynesville area school graduate to have? And you've heard a lot of them talk about, um, communication, collaboration, problem solving. Those are their anchors. Those are their columns or their the what they determined as a community, as a school district together, that that's what we want our students to come out with. And then you heard that theme at the elementary level, you heard it at the second, at the middle school level and at the secondary level. So it was all the way through. All of it is stemming from content. We obviously know that our students need to be able to read, they need to be able to write, they need to be able to do all of these things. And we have to build in that communication or whatever it is, right? So, um, that's, that's what the, um, what their Portrait of a Graduate, how that works for their community. The Columbus City Schools is quite a bit shorter. I'll make this one, this one's about five minutes, um, but it's just another example.
Now that we have a Portrait of a Graduate in place, then we as a district will have to stop doing some things that we were doing in the past. The portrait would be front and center. These are the six attributes that we are going to ensure that when our students graduate, that they are able to master. The first pillar is adaptability. To me, adaptability means how do our students interact in adverse environments? We are in a country now where there are so many different people from so many different places, the beauty of learning from one another and how we can solve those problems together. The next pillar is communication. How do we make sure that our students can express themselves? Our students have to be able to ask questions, ask for feedback and really getting students to understand that your voice matters. The next pillar is creativity. Our students can come up with multiple ways of of addressing our problems and to learn and at their own pace, you have to create that space for creativity to happen and and it has to emerge, I believe, in in that manner. The next pillar is critical thinking. It is important for my students to understand thinking about a problem in a very complex way starts to build those critical thinking skills. And it allows students to know that I don't have to have all the answers right now, but I can think about and and build upon what I believe the answer will be. The next pillar is global empathy. How do we get students to understand that what they may see happen to another student or even to their neighbor? How do we feel? How does that make us feel when we see injustice happening, when we see poverty happen? What does that feel like? And not just locally in Columbus, but around the world? We all should be using technology as a lever to advance our students' opportunities. We as an organization, we are going to use technology to make sure that students have access to curriculum, wherever they are. We want to be a district that when our students graduate, they can demonstrate those six attributes. That's what's important to us right now, to make sure that our students have an opportunity to lead. We have to be student first. Um, and and I think that's where the magic happens is that we're doing it not just for our students, we're doing it with our students and student voice matters.
All right, again, so what you're hearing are are characteristics of what are, what do we want our students to have? What skills do we want them to bring into a workforce, to bring into? If I, if I reach out to our workforce here in town and say, what do you need our students to to be able to do? They can teach a lot of the skills that are that they need our students to do, but they can't teach them some of the things that we have an opportunity to teach them from elementary on, whether it's communication, problem solving, whatever. So it, these are just two different examples that I'm just sharing with you to kind of get you to start thinking about what a profile of a graduate or a portrait of a graduate. What is it that we want our students, when they graduate from Haynesville area schools, to possess? And, um, so this, this conversation, this dialogue, this is not, I mean, this is something that was part of the strategic plan before I got here. So this is, I mean, this is where you guys have kind of had some of this work and discussion. And when you, when you hear things like, um, personalized learning and you hear how how kids are are trying to problem solve through, um, having a project that's unique to them and how all of these things align. But this is kind of taking the the work that we've done with our strategic plan and sometimes strategic planning and profile work go hand in hand, they'll do them at the same time. But our strategic plan is very robust right now and it's got a lot of components that I think will help drive the discussions for this work. From a region, so as I've mentioned a number of times, I'm part of, um, uh, MASA and our region has a very collaborative structure, um, where superintendents come together and talk through, what are the things that that you're doing right now and can we do anything collaboratively? And doing some of this Profile of a Graduate work is some of the thing, one of the things that we've talked about collaborating to try to do together. And whether that's through resource training and solutions, whether that's having somebody come there and we all go there, but having a a strategic way to kind of work smarter, not harder, you know, so that we're brainstorming, we're all bringing ideas together. But then ultimately, we as a community, and I say a community because I think it involves our our businesses, it involves our parents, it involves our students. Heard a number of times a student voice. What do our students want and how, what is one of the best ways that we can engage kids? By having their voices heard. So this is some of the work that is kind of ongoing and and this is a very introductory, I guess, exposure to what the profile of a graduate can look like. Um, and and I will keep you updated as I know more about how this opportunity presents for us and what that could look like, where it happens, if it happens here, if it happens in St. Cloud, if it happens, I I'll bring you more information about that. But again, there's probably three or four different school districts that are at the point where we're saying, all right, let's start this discussion, let's start this work so that we can really identify, here's what we want our students to have. And when we do it all together, meaning community, parents, teachers, students, staff, there's there the, a much better ability to move it forward. So questions about Portrait of a or Profile of a Graduate?
I'm a little sensitive to this one.
Okay.
Um, I'm sensitive because when I read Portrait of a Graduate, I look at portraits of a graduate. Our systems of schools, um, pigeonhole everybody to get to a four-year college for a period of time. Um, we now have a tech wing. We have a tech wing where kids could learn to go right to work. We have some that could go to a two-year college or a four-year college or beyond. They could go in sciences, trades, all of that. I worry sometimes when I see this, that we try to pigeonhole everybody. Now, there's dynamics that I don't understand. When you say you want everybody to have critical thinking, that may be necessary for some of them, but not all. And you have students that, I went to school with students that couldn't sit down and put half the stuff on a piece of paper and they probably are still there today. Kids like that, but then maybe their trajectory, but how do we as a school say, and I thought we were doing pretty well there, that we're pretty open. My feeling has always been when they graduate, have we given them the opportunities for going to work right out of school if they want? It was their deal for the graduate, going to a two-year study, going to a four-year college, um, however they want, but we were giving them wide open opportunities. Then when I watched both of these, I just felt it was more pigeonholing than, and I, that's probably my biggest issue.
Uh, thank you for raising that because I want to, and I want to, I want to acknowledge that, but I'm also going to say that's why we do this is so that our kids, whether they go through a two-year, if I want to go right to a trade, I have the skills, the problem solving and if, and to suggest that a kid that moves into a trades program doesn't have to problem solve would be, that is, that's super, that's just not true.
They have to problem solve, but they might not be able to put on paper to make it look really fancy in a class, but they naturally have that ability.
Right.
They didn't need anybody to teach them.
But what we're, what we're doing is we're providing opportunities for kids to demonstrate and and practice problem solving or whatever the, and maybe it's about communication. I would say some of our students that I can, I can think about that have been the most successful in a hands-on environment. They absolutely thrive and I couldn't, and they would never demonstrate, but I I would never get an A paper out of those kids. And that's perfect. But the problem is, is sometimes they don't have the problem solving skills to communicate when they're frustrated, bringing, doing whatever it is that they have to do in their, in in their job, right? So what are the areas? What are the skills? And it's not, and it's not pigeonholing the kids. I think that what this is doing is this is opening the the opportunity on a wider berth to say, in all of these opportunities, whether we have a, uh, a student that's going to a four-year Ivy League school, or if I have a student that says, you know what, I'm starting my own business and I don't need anything phenomenal. What are, what does that look like though? Are they able to communicate effectively? Are they able to budget and manage their finances effectively? Whatever, though, but those are the things where we all come together and we determine what are the, what are the, the, um, components of that child that are going to make them successful in any realm? So I hear your concern and I don't, and I don't believe that that's what this is doing. I believe that this is opening it up to say, we know that kids have multitude of opportunities in front of them, but what do we need them? How do we, maybe it's about character, maybe it's about being a, being, how do we, how they're, one of them talked about empathy, you know, how they, they're kind with others. Well, how does that look like and what is that? How is that demonstrated? Does that make sense? So I I don't believe that it's.
I just see a whole bunch of different people. Sometimes you can do all of this and there's that great kid in the back of the class never speaks up, never talks, very quiet. Doesn't mean they're missing any of it.
Absolutely.
Doesn't, but it may not mean that you have certain students can't put it on a piece of paper. I just want to, so when I happened, I mean, I say years ago had this deal, a project, leave, 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 yeah, whatever that was, Leave No Kid Behind. Don't think we should be there. I just, I'm interested to make sure everybody has a chance.
I, but I, what I see is different, we're looking at, and each school would have to learn that differently, but what are the pillars that we think would go into preparing a child? And we don't have to worry about, well, can they put it on paper or can they do it this way? Because they all can do it different ways, but can they do it?
Right.
However, they do it. I mean, I went through an education system that said memorize all this stuff and you go out and you'll be fine. I'm way older than the rest of you, so, you know, that was the education system, you know, if you can repeat all this stuff, yeah. But we were never taught critical thinking. We were taught to memorize. So, yeah, what what do the kids need? I put down failure. How do we teach the kids to fail?
How to fail successfully?
Because.
So you learn.
Basketball player who won't take a shot because he's afraid he's going to miss a basket is never going to succeed.
Right.
He learns that you've got to fail 50% of the time, or maybe more than that.
And as it, as it, to that point, the the one portion of the video where she said, we create opportunities for them to fail in a safe place. They created an oppor, like they were doing the interviews and when they didn't go well, they created the opportunities for those kids to do poorly so that they could be coached and learn how to do it better or well or whatever. So.
And and I was a kid in the back of the room who would never raise my hand. You know why I wouldn't raise my hand? Because I was afraid I might be wrong. And then I failed and then I, you know, if I could, if somebody could have taught me that was okay to be wrong, I would have been a lot better off at school, but.
But I guess I, I kind of was thinking that too, Bruce, as far as that would be pigeonholing. And I guess that was a good word to put towards it, but, yeah, if we look at it as a, take every, like they have the six pillars there, take them all with, with a little bit of grain of salt in the fact that if, uh, a student can improve on at least two of the six, you know, they're, they're not going to master all six of them. But that's kind of what we're after is for them to improve that maybe their communication or their empathy or or what have you.
And and what is it that our, what is it that we want our students and and maybe sportsmanship? You know, so when you think about one of the things that our, that our activities director just talked about, are if our students are on the court and they're respectful, does that, is that taught throughout their experience? Absolutely, that is taught throughout their experience. And if that's a core value or a pillar or a component, I'm, I'm using a couple of different terms here that you might hear as this kind of progress progresses through, but that's of, that's something that's taught from early on, that this is how we handle disappointment, adversity, conflict, whatever, because that's going to be something we expect of our graduates. Um, it's, it's just, I, I think there's things that we, if, and maybe we only have four, about four core, maybe we have eight, who knows? I mean, this is, this is the work that we have in front of us is to kind of start thinking about what are the things that when we send our kids out, wherever they go, we want to know that they have X, Y, and Z as foundational skills. Those are the things that we have to think about.
And I think the the value is made different from, if you were to ask the businesses in town or the industry in town, you know, what competencies do they want to graduate from Haynesville? Well, I would think they'd want to be able to work well with other people because they're working with other people. But we may be graduating kids, we're going to go out there and say, I'm never going to work with anybody else. I'm going to do my own thing. So, but you have to teach everybody the competencies so they are ready.
When I think about the grading system, so our system was set up on a grading system, right? Well, let's take one of those classes and certain students aren't really clicking with it, but we decided as a school board, this is a competence that you have to have. So how are we going to handle it? Or do we move the kids to pass fail so they get some credit? And how does somebody determine whether they're involved or not? It comes by doing papers, turning something in. There has to be some analysis for one instructor, um, based on kids of how you grade them.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe you're, you're taking this too formal of an education process and less of a development through the current education process that we have right now. We're not changing our classes to say, we're going to have professional development classes that are going to focus on communication. We already have communication classes and English classes that we're going to build a culture of how we educate to give students an opportunity to communicate better within the current core classes that we already have. Because we do have those students that sit in the back of class and they don't say anything. We do have those students that are poor sports and or or don't want to speak up because they're afraid to fail. We want to build that culture and I feel like to a point, we're kind of already touching on some of this stuff through some of these other projects that our teachers are are learning, the elementary student, the elementary teachers are already learning all these other processes, how to develop students, how to change behaviors, how to do this. We're already working on that. We're not changing how they're teaching, we're just working on how to, and this is, I guess that's how I think this, it's less formal of like, these are the six core things that you're going to have to learn before you graduate or else. This is more like, can we encourage better behaviors of life skills for people that we know, that you know, that you've gone through life skills of how to communicate, how to deal with, you know, with, with, um, you know, controversy, how to deal with, you know, but there's students that come out that have no idea how to do that. They, you know, but maybe that's something we need to not focus as a class, but focus on the broader scheme of of.
I'm just, I'm just really curious as as to, what's driving this? Because I, I kind of agree with Bruce. Do you know, I think we need to go there and take a look at it because, and and this is just. Do you know, I think we need to go there and take a look at it because, and, and this is just an opinion of mine. Everything that is being, that they're talking about here, I learned at home. Because of my parents were involved with me, how to communicate, how to problem, problem solve, how to work with others, cause I had siblings. I'm not saying that schools shouldn't do that in a sense. But when I walked into the school, I think most people, most, uh, uh, teachers already knew. That hey, this is the stuff that you're bringing because this is what you've taught at home. I guess, and this is the reason why I agree with you, you know, that we really need to look at it, because I just wonder where that, that involvement is at anymore. And then what these teachers may be faced with when students do come in that don't have that. That, that we need to teach them to, to be better citizens. Because it's gonna be a lot worse than it is now, you know, as far as say a society.
So when you think about like the twenty-one, the twenty-first century skills, we're talking about innovation, we're talking about creativity, the, the kids that are. That are coming into our school today are gonna have jobs that are not thought of yet. And it, and when, when you look at the system. That they have come through and that they're coming through, it's a very roped system. And if we don't teach them how to be critical thinkers, how to, um, problem solve something that's not. Doesn't maybe have a black and white answer. Um, and whether that's happening at home or it's not happening at home, it's an extension of, and if parents say, you know what? Yeah, this is, these are the values, the pillars, the, the, um, characteristics. That I want my, I, this is what we, how we teach it at home. This is why I, so school district, you also value that. That's where we come together and have some common value again, and it's, and it's, there are. I, I can tell you that maybe respects loo- looks different in my house than it did in your house. Okay, but now we all are gonna value respect. What it looks like and sounds like is some of the work that we have to do here. What does that look in the school? Right? But I, I, so I think.
But, but, but then I, then I, once again, then I agree with Bruce. Then how do you grade that?
And it doesn't need to be graded. Why, is, is it, is it a?
Is behavioral. Elementary students need to be graded? It, we don't, we're, we're just working on behavioral to, you know, you know. Characteristics of students and that's not a grade, that's just, uh.
But if, but if, if I took what they were talking there, that they started someplace, they either floated down or they pushed it up. That eventually what they're looking at is that you are going to start at kindergarten. And you're gonna go all the way up to twelfth grade. At some time, you're gonna have to grade something.
Well, of course.
How, 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 how did they, at, at, at kindergarten, how did you know that they were changing something that they're getting better? I think this is something to take, look, I, I, I don't.
I just, I don't, I don't see this as a formal grading.
It's not a graded.
It's not, it's not part of your GPA.
Benchmarks with some. Within our school, we have seen.
So this is what this looks like and, and when I, when I see this behavior, so when you think about social emotional learning. Okay, so social emotional learning is, is, it's, that can be a hot topic, hot topic item for some people because. Is it my job to teach a child how to be respectful? Yes, it's my job to teach everybody how to be respectful or whatever the.
Right, okay.
So, but do I know what it looks like? If I've not had discussion. Do I know what being respectful looks like? That's some of the work that has to happen. If we have, let's talk about responsibility. Does it matter to me if, if a student turns in a hundred pieces of paper? And, and cannot answer a question off of that piece of paper? What have I taught them? Have they learned responsibility? Well, they demonstrated responsibility, but what does it look like? So it's, I don't believe, when I, when I look at this concept. It's not a, this is what they have to demonstrate to graduate. This is not their graduation ticket. This is in my, when I listen to this and I look at this work. It's, it's about the characters, the characteristics that we want our students to demonstrate. When we were talking about the, um, culture and climate committee and what some of the work that is happening and we talked about our student body. Um, and they have, we have pockets of students that feel very connected. We have pockets of students that are really disconnected. One of the things that we realized is that we don't have a common. A, a, a common list of values of this is what we as a school district value. We didn't, our student body doesn't, we haven't, you know, and now this is a big task, right? It's a really big task. But I think these are some of the things that when we're looking at skills that our students possess. It can be demonstrated in fifty different ways. If I, if I wanna, again, if I'm gonna put out an assignment and my. The reason I've given that assignment is cause I wanna dem- I wanna know, did you learn the content? You can demonstrate that to me in fifty different ways. Your way will be different than your way, which might be different than yours, but I know they all demonstrated the same concept. When you're talking about things that are abstract like this. I think it feels really ambiguous because it's, it's hard to measure. Do we know what it looks like? We're gonna see things that we're gonna have benchmarks like. Yeah, if I see a kid, if, if I value, uh, as school district, if we've talked about. Showing empathy. Okay, and if I see a student that is targeting another student in the hallway because of X, Y, or Z. Is that demonstrating empathy? Very clearly not. I can define that. We know that there's a, there's a, a criteria.
Right, okay.
Right? Now, does that student, do I withhold graduation from that student? No. But do we say, here's why you need to show empathy? Cause when you're out on the workforce and you, you behave like that at work, you might get fired. Right? So we, we correlate the skills. Doesn't mean we don't, it, we grade it per se. So, I mean, that's.
So maybe, maybe we were hung up on the fact that this is portrait of a graduate. Yeah, this is a singular picture of what somebody who graduates high school should look like, you know what I mean? And, and there is no singular portrait of a graduate. Yeah, a, a better name.
I think there's some merit to it. Couple of things. You, you said it and they said it a couple of times here, they're educating kids for something we don't know about in the future. Name to me any time in history that wasn't true. I find it relatively laughable.
Sure.
It's an interesting comment, but this is not a new thing. The ki- the people, things are doing today. Twenty years ago, ten years ago, I wouldn't have imagined, because it's different, so.
Until now to recognize it. Education twenty years ago. And you'll go to college and then you'll go to this. That's what the education was when I graduated. Twenty years ago, you know, and.
And we didn't necessarily have portrait of a student then. I, I just got kinda sensitive. Thing is, we have a bunch of students from all different walks of life. We have, I recall a student that was in my class. That end up as like a nuclear physicist or something. Kid never said a word the whole time he was in school. Honestly. We certainly wouldn't want him to get a bad impression, cause he didn't meet some, um, benchmarks that we were.
But let me ask you this question. So he's got this whole host of knowledge. And somehow, some way, somebody had to build a relationship with him to tap into that knowledge to learn how much he had inside.
Right, I'm not saying that everybody needs it. Did he have it naturally? I don't know. Was it somebody else? Or did he change over a period of time? How many of us now that were really quiet in the back of the class aren't, aren't as quiet anymore? I, I just find this very interesting, but I, I wanna be careful.
Maybe I see this more in the holistic sense of individualistic, you're looking at each individual student, where are they at? I'm looking at the whole culture of the community, which will help each individual hopefully move to that point.
Cause that's not what it says. There's nothing plural in there at all.
You're being very critically thinking about. Kinda learn that words don't always have the same meaning.
Because I don't know how you're going to teach this. So I. So I think what it is, is it's, it's developing situations and, and recognizing scenarios. Where students have an opportunity to practice it. Some of it, maybe they already had it at home and they brought it in and they're demonstrating for others. Some, maybe they've never experienced it. They're going to watch others, they're going to learn from others and then be given an opportunity to demonstrate it. It's, I, some of, when you, like a, how do you teach somebody to be kind? Through demonstration, through having conversation, was that kind? I, I mean, I'm in my fluff zone right now, right? But, but, right? I mean, those are, if, but if we, we talk about. Problem solving and problem solving is a skill that we want our students to demonstrate. Can I teach a kindergarten, how to, kindergartner, how to problem solve? Can I walk through a situation with a kindergartner and say, that's good problem solving? Absolutely, I can. Is their problem gonna be quite a bit smaller than a twelfth grader's problem? For sure. But are they both gonna demonstrate problem solving in one say, some way, shape, or form? Yeah, cause it's something we value. It's something we as a, as a district have said. This is a pillar that I, we really want our kids to come out of our school district. Being problem solvers or whatever.
But I think we're already doing that. How are we going to change our curriculum or processes? To correlate to some new.
So then we just need to define it maybe.
What are we already doing?
Then, then let's define it.
And make sure the whole staff understands this and they're part of it.
Well, I'm really interested in where this is going.
Years ago, when I did my tour of the high school, I sat in on a class and. One of the students was a special ed student and it was getting to your prom time and. The other girls were all talking about her dress, what kinda dress she was gonna have. She was so proud of this. And at that point, when I went to school, first of all, I spent your life student would have been in a whole other wing of the school, it would have been touched by us at all. But I saw the empathy that they had and the kindness they had towards her. I said, somebody's doing something right in this school. Cause you can see it if you look for it. And maybe the teachers are being trained to look for it, so they can also.
I think, I think, so what, what you're talking about is, is taking all the work that everybody is doing and just being very intentional. In the practice and really honing in. And identifying what are the things that are absolutely working and then being intentional across the board.
It will take work because, I mean, what, what you could do in a situation like that is you can take his aside and say, that was good, you suck, can, you know, what you learned from that, you did a good job and. And the kids that learned at home can be the ones who in the school can be the leaders that will help teach, not leaders in a. Traditional sense, but can lead in. By example, by example and doing some of the things that kids from other schools are not gonna get in.
And it's a work in progress. Start out at kindergarten, get into fourth grade. Maturity, puberty, or they learn from their mistakes. Hey, I screwed up.
And, and how do we, how do we create opportunities for those kids to, to learn through that mistake and not penalize them forever? And not have that be a lifelong detriment. You know? So it's, it's good discussion. This was, this was very. Yep, that's fine, yep.
Good, good discussion and that's what the purpose of these.
That's, that's why this is on a work session and there's no action, cause we can just now let it permeate. All right, calendar consideration, um, I, unfortunately, we have, um, used up our e-learning days with our inclement weather. Um, so one of the things that I, I will be asking the board to, uh, take action on at the end of the month is, um. Adding some days back into our calendar. So currently, the days that are, are open to add. Um, we have President's Day, which is, um, in February and we have the, um, Easter Monday, which is in April. As two current days that could be added back in. My concern, to be frank and honest with the February date, is that it's really close and I don't think I'm. I don't know, I, is that enough time to allow people to change schedules that would need to be changed? That's my only concern with February. And then, um, adding back into the end of the year. Um, I have, so we, we have to make that make up one, one day for sure. And if I was, if I'm a farmer's almanac reader, I'm guessing we're gonna have probably a couple more days. Um, so just, uh, I, you know, I, I want the board to be, you know. Thinking about what you would like to, um, if there is feedback that you would like me to consider before making a recommendation to the board. I have reached out to. Our union groups to get some ideas. So really the, the two union groups that are, or the three union groups that are the most pertinent. Um, are going to be our, our pair professionals, food service and our, um, teaching staff because. Um, the custodial maintenance are two hundred and sixty day employees anyways, um, so they're working every day. But, um, you know, we, it's building back those, those days in the, in the calendar, so.
Are you, are you looking for a recommendation, I guess, now?
I just, I'm, I'm opening this up for you to, if there are things that you want me to be considering. To get this discussion, because this is, now's the time to have discussion about it, not when we go to vote. And, um, and I create the calendar and then we have to change it. Now's the time to have discussion about it.
Now's the time to get those dates added in ASAP, I feel, because, uh. That extending and going into June. My personal feeling is, is worthless. Hopefully, we don't have to extend the days that tend here. That would be my recommendation.
Uh, those are considerations. I think, you know, I, I. I would like to, um, do a little bit of polling to find out if I, how many staff. I would not have on February nineteenth. The twentieth or the, that would be long, that have already put in or that already have.
Vacations.
Vacations planned.
President's Day weekend?
Cause that's a long, President's Weekend is often a long weekend for. You know, for where people take.
So what other days are choices?
Um, Easter Monday, end of the school year.
We don't have a lot of choices.
Good Friday. You know, I, I, I suppose we could do, you could do Good Friday and Easter Monday. It's really gonna depend on, on how much. What the weather does for us, but, um, those, those really are the, the options that are left.
Yeah, it would depend on staffing issues or, you know, other things at that. But that, I just soon make up February twentieth to start. With the notion that too, I mean, we could get really lucky, knock on wood, have. We're gonna have snow, but just not that much snow. You know, we could, we, but.
So I, I will, um, I'll do a, uh, uh. Straw poll. I'll check to kinda get a sense of, of, um, what that February date looks like and then. Uh, make a recommendation to start building days back in.
We'd had a, a e-learning day during conferences. Just the high school or was that elementary also?
Um, it's just the high school.
Does that count against us then?
Yes.
That's why I, elementary, well, we technically had like the three e-learning days, cause the high school conferences use up two or five.
And in the future calendar, that won't be a fact. But, um, the other thing is, is required days, so I've had people ask me in the past. Um, only staff had to make up the first snow day, but that's when there was a hundred and seventy-one student days. We are at one seventy. Which brings us to the right number of instructional minutes that our secondary building has to have.
Does the secondary have to have the same instructional days number wise as the elementary? No. That was my other question. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
How many day difference is it? Or is there no?
Yeah, I have to look at instruction, how many instructional minutes, it's like. Eight hundred and some odd or nine hundred minutes for elementary and like a thousand.
Oh, what, two days or what did we?
The, the statute identifies instructional minutes.
Not us or our teachers unions, it's.
It's the, it's. Um, as an aside, Ron, just to, uh, I did my calculation, like I said, I wouldn't, it's about three hundred and six thousand dollars. For, if we would have a five percent increase. Using sixty-eight hundred dollars as our baseline and it would go up to about seventy-one forty. Using sixty-eight hundred dollars as our baseline and it would go up to about seventy-one forty.
Four and about a hundred thousand at two percent.
So.
A little over thousand.
So there you go.
Difference.
Thank you. All right, round table, over to you, chairperson.
I just have a quick question. I looked at this calendar uh, before I came here. What is that? I don't know, what color? I don't see that.
Yeah, it is either.
As far as.
Oh, sure. Those are the window, um, those are like that, uh, in October, the twenty-fourth.
Right, yeah.
November tenth.
Yeah.
So that's the, the window of um, behind that the secondary building has to do conferences. So they have a conference window.
Got you, okay.
So um, they have e-learning that day, but then there's that window of time where they and, and what the teachers will all do is they document how they communicated with families and they have a spreadsheet of, of what it is.
Got you.
That's what those two colored windows are.
Yeah, I'm a problem.
Yep.
Okay, uh, question for information, uh, what I'd like to just go through briefly is the uh, conference coming up.
Okay.
Um, for those who haven't been there, is everybody gonna be there at the conference or? Uh, just one of the things I wanna mention is that there are a lot of workshops. Think we get, we can go to four or three, I can't remember how they worked that out on Friday, but we might be able to get four in, but. There's a, um, we try to spread them out so we don't all go to, if we find out that everybody's going to the same workshop, which I said, wait a minute, you know, let's because we wanna go and get as much information as we can.
Well, if Danielle has specific places where she thinks somebody needs to be to learn something that's happening. Then she can give us that information. The rest of us, at some, sometime, probably maybe Wednesday night or Thursday morning, because we have the big session when talk a little bit about, you know, who's going where. And if
Yep.
You're going to same place I am, or maybe two of us isn't bad, but if five of us are all going to the same workshop. When we come back, and I don't know which meeting we'll do that at.
We'll do it at the um, January twenty-fourth.
Okay, there will be a time for us to report back. We'd like to let the public know that we did something.
Mm-hmm.
And you all have a chance then to come back and say, you know, I attended this workshop or I learned this or whatever. So sometime before Thursday, when the workshops start, we should kinda talk to each other and just see what you're interested in doing.
So I did go through and I outlined some of the, um, I pulled out some sessions. I created a spreadsheet for you so that you could see things that maybe align with some of the work that we've been talking about. Um, one of them happens to be a profile of a graduate. Um, some of it is about, has facilities, some of it is um, fi- uh, finance, um, how to read finance reports, some things that are. So there's, I, I did put together a few items that I thought might be the most pertinent. Again, go to whatever is of interest to you, now that you've kinda looked at the committee assignments as well. If there's something that really aligns to, oh, I, I'd like this background to pull into a committee. Go ahead and do that. And if you want to, um, I think it's a, a very valid point to kind of divide and conquer as much as possible. Um, I mean, while also knowing that it's kinda nice sometimes to have, you know, if there's a really complex topic. Have somebody else with you to listen to it as well, so I get it.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, it, it's never been to big conferences or conference centers when it, it's pretty busy and, and, and fun, so.
Yep, and then uh, um, so phase one and phase two, um, we're all set for tomorrow. So um, tomorrow and tomorrow evening and Wednesday. So there's a lot of learning. I know that this is a lot in a couple of days. Um, so we'll have some opportunity to kind of free, to share out some of the things that we.
Wednesday's a long day.
Find the most important.
So the conference center is just hooked right onto the hotel?
Um, so the convention center is, uh, you have to walk through the skyway or outside.
It's a walking distance, so.
Yeah.
It is walking distance, yeah.
Pretty much you're gonna park your car and you won't see it till you.
Once you.
Unless you want to.
You want to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so it's, um, I'd say the, the convention center is maybe a ten or fifteen minute walk through the skyways.
I see, yeah.
Yep.
So if it's cold and, if it's a nice.
If it's nice.
Sunny morning and.
Lots of band to walk outside.
Outside's not so bad either, just some, it's an outside air for a little while, like just stuck inside for three days.
Um, you'll all, the, when you get into the convention center, you'll go down to the ground level and that's where you'll get your registration, just.
But now you're what, Thursday or Tuesday, Wednesday is all in Hilton, the Hilton, right?
Correct.
So.
Yep.
So then again. That's in your, your classes tomorrow night and Wednesday will be in the Hilton.
Where we're.
They will be in the Hilton.
Yes.
The first two.
First two. But then the conference. Will be in the convention center.
Yep.
So please, please make sure you check board notes, um, because I have all that information shared in board notes as well. Okay?
Anything else anyone wants to bring up?
I've had some community members ask me what's happened to all of our banners in the gym. It looks bare.
Yep, um, so the banners have been a work in progress, um, a discussion in progress. Um, they um, currently I've got um, Mike researching. Um, because it's how far back do you go to hang your banners and what date do you use? Um, and some of them, so it's a project at the moment, um.
But it is a process.
It is in process and it's not been, we've had students comment on it and I, I hear it. I absolutely know we're working on having. So here's a plea, um, we're gonna probably put in, and Mike has put into the newspaper in the past. You know, this is when things, and hoping to clarify information so that somebody doesn't come up after banners are made and hung, this was wrong, you know, making sure that the information is, is correct. Um, and I, I'm, I'm certain that he would be willing to publish it again, or I can put it in my own column. But just to really, we're looking for people to help us confirm the information so that what, what's put up is accurate and correct. Because it, it is, yes, it's on the agenda.
And just a, another follow up on that, because I noticed one of the videos, do we still have a robotics team?
Yeah.
We do, okay. Again, it's something I haven't heard about for a while, so if we don't.
We sure do. Yep, Jay Thompson is still working on, yeah. Do that. All right.
There's no other questions and uh.
You turn.
We turn. I don't think we need a call for Joe.
Nope. Great.
All right. Pick this one. I'll throw those in the cabinet.
Even here.
Sure.
In a super official name badge.
Yeah, the rules are coming.